All right, thank you so much. The time is 6:00 PM. We are going to go ahead at this time and call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Mayor LaClair.
Thank you so much. Let's begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and move into Call to the Public. Call to the Public for a public comment on the issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. We have a few this evening. I just wanted to kick it off that call to the public by actually saying that today at the Florence Aquatic Center, we had a press conference that was held to publicize the partnership of water safety between the Town of Florence Community Services Department and the American Red Cross. The two organizations partner to reduce drownings by providing trained and certified water safety instructors to teach accessible and affordable swim lessons to children and adults. For example, 162 people registered for swim lessons last year from our certified water safety instructor. This year alone, we've already had 122 people in swim lessons being taught by eight water safety instructors. Our instructors are proud to have taught these people to swim and not only improved their enjoyment of the aquatic center, but greatly enhanced their water safety experience. The speakers at today's event including Aquatics Coordinator Bebo, Jim Galoon, who is the Regional Communication and Marketing Manager for the American Red Cross, and Florence Fire Chief David Strayer. Each emphasized the importance of water safety and the success of our aquatics staff and the American Red Cross in partnering together for these events to reduce drownings. Now that school is out and triple-digit temperatures are expected this week, we're pleased to report that our aquatics staff and our fire department personnel are trained and dedicated to not only prevent possible drownings, but are more than capable to respond in case of an emergency. So on behalf of myself and the Town Council, we thank our aquatics personnel, our fire department, and Red Cross for working together to make our aquatic center as safe as possible. Our first speaker for Call to the Public, time for three minutes because there are a few, is Charles Watson, who wishes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to mention one thing before I start, if I may. You mentioned about the water.
Yes.
Remember I discussed it with you one time? Some of your state best swimmers came from Florence. Harold Levin and Dr. Clemmons, they were the top swimmers of the state of Arizona when I was young in school. I just wanted to mention that for you because you started with, and I thought that was great because it's something that they have to celebrate, I think. So you are, it was great. Okay, I want to start. My, what I want to address is on your budget, the $650,000 for your lawyers for outside. And I know it's pretty well to fight on this with the mines. And as, I guess what I'm trying to say is that you, you guys represent us. You really work for the community. I'd really love in my heart to see us bury the hatchet on this and be done. Because I know that it's just, they're here. Why not all join hands and work together? And as I said to start with one time before, a long time ago, that there's other mines that had problems down in South America. And they actually brought in people from that community that were worried about it. And they were on property all the time. And if there's any questions that would come up on your mind, they could stop and discuss it with the town people. And it worked very well. And I mentioned that a long time ago to you. But what I wanted to ask you is, I just wish we could sort of see eye to eye on this. It's already producing and it's going to create jobs for our community. I can't tell you enough that you represent all of us, not just part of the community. This community's everybody. And I think it should have been more sitting down with the community, talking about it, and have more community action. But we're over that, it's passed. I really believe if we can't sit down and talk about it and can't come to eye to eye on it and want to fight it, I don't know how else to say it, fight if that's what you want to say. It'll come down, then you're going to have to whip it up in the election time and really get somebody to run that would at least sit down and represent everybody in this community. So I think that's really important. But I'd really, I really would like to see you solve the problem or you just be able to talk it all out is what I'd really like to see. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Watson, what I would suggest is if you could take a few moments after and speak with Mr. Benjamin Bitter, and he can give you some updates as to some things that had happened in the past as well as recently, so that way you're up to date on everything. Mr. Jerry Raybert.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Raybert and I live in the historic district at the John Batiste Maché House on Ruggles. I recently met several Anthem residents who support the copper project. These are people who have experienced working in or with the mining community. We live in a changing world and new methods for extracting copper minerals are being tested. Florence could be a leader in this technology. The Florence Copper Project can bring needed revenue to the community which could be used to protect and save historic properties from demolition. To tear down three historic buildings, the town was willing to cut services, projects, and contingencies. What about the expense of fighting the copper project? Think about the fines being levied against the town because of unfounded legal actions to stop the project. Think about what could be done with that money. How much will it cost to fight the copper project this year? The answer is hidden in the budget you're about to approve. This council and members of previous councils have started the ball rolling with regulatory agencies. Now we should let them do their job. The town should be more concerned with the quantity of water, not just the quality, and place a moratorium on any new subdivisions. Then we could concentrate our efforts on economic development and what to do with three empty lots on Main Street. It appears that the demolition is not going to cost as much as originally planned. I am curious just how much the lien against our new Boulder Line gravel lot on Main Street and Bailey is going to be. And is there any movement by Matt Ritter to settle the debt? The Town of Florence purchased the old Pinell County Credit Union building for offices in the south end of town. Then recently agreed to buy two vacant lots on Ruggles for storage? Maybe the, excuse me, maybe the town could buy one empty lot on Main Street and lead the way to infill construction. Thank you.
Ms. Lori Wood.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pinell and Gila Counties could be siblings. Both started as ranching and mining communities. Both were rural areas. Both struggled to create an economic base to provide jobs. However, Pinell took a different path and embraced opportunity for growth. Like our county, this town needs to take a different path. All one has to do is look a few miles northeast to the mining community of Superior and see the resurgence of a rural community. What is responsible for this resurgence? Copper. Mining helps create jobs and opportunities which lead to home purchasing, sending kids to college, et cetera. Florence Copper is a responsible mining company that can and will improve this community. As community leaders, I would love to see you embrace fact and not fiction and support the opportunity for growth and stop this witch hunt. Thank you.
Ms. Kim. Ms. Kim.
I never come up here. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Walters and Florence Town Councilmembers. My name is Kim Ella Brock and I live at 12401 North Dominion Road in Florence. Although my home is just outside town boundaries, I own Bucks for Style on Main Street. I call the Town of Florence my home. I pay taxes in Florence. I shop in Florence and my friends and family are committed to this town. In fact, we love this town, but we are discouraged. As a business owner on Main Street, I listen to a lot of residents... Can I move this down? Okay. I listen to a lot of residents who come in my shop, visit, shop. They always say, "What do you guys do in the Town of Florence for fun?" I go, "Well, we go quadbing in the desert or we go hiking. We have the winery." There's not much to do. We collaborate with other Main Street owners to build up our businesses. The Town of Florence is continually described to me as not being business-friendly. That's what I hear over and over. And believe me, I try to stick up for the town all the time. But I'm starting to feel the same way because investors want to come in with ideas. They come in as quick as they leave. In my opinion, the best way this council could reserve this perception is to simply stop fighting a major revenue generator and employer. Stop fighting the Florence Copper. Stop fighting hundreds of paying jobs. Stop fighting a business that will bring revenue to our town. People come to Florence to live and they want to spend their money here. Hopefully, that's why we can rebuild Main Street. Main Street is not thriving like it should be. We need more shopping. We need more restaurants. We need more bars. Let's spend money on Main Street. Let's bring life back to Main Street. Let's get these vacant buildings to code and get businesses in them. Many of us like to see this town develop a little bit more than it is. Florence deserves high-paying jobs. Florence deserves a vibrant Main Street. We love that community pool that came in was built. Gives our kids and visitors a fun, safe environment to enjoy. Let's keep those things coming. We need a great fitness center, possibly a lake at Heritage so kids can learn a hobby like fishing instead of fishing derby, which is only, it's a great event, but only brings it out once a year. Let's spend our money on productive activities that we can bring to our town and people will stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carla Foss.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I just want to say that I support the copper project and I'm concerned that the money is being spent to fight something that can bring in money and jobs and to rebuild the town and to make the town a better place. You know, I've been here for 12 years and there have been some great beautification projects that have made the town look really great. And, but the buildings are still falling apart. And I think we could really put our money into those buildings and do a much better job instead of paying legal fees to the copper project. And I just want to say I represent a lot of people who can't always make it out to these things. I'm up in Anthem and there are a lot of like-minded people up there. Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Adam.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm Kathy, excuse me, I'm Kathy Adam. I live at 240 East Ruggles here in town. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to talk about the budget work session that happened on May 20th. My apologies, I couldn't make that meeting. I did look at the videotape so I understand what went on with the council. And I just wanted to give you my perspective onto some of the points that were raised that night. But first, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Hawkins, Councilmember Hughes, and Councilmember Cortez for speaking up for us. But I heard all of you voiced your support for the museum and we really do appreciate all your help. So first of all, PCHS is proudly self-supporting and one of the only museums in the county open as many days and for many, as many hours as we are. We are the only public facility open in this town on Sundays when the town is locked down and not open for business to visitors. Two, the shortfall we were seeking funding with is a result of a shoddy roofing job we had done. So we are unexpectedly hit with the requirement for a significantly expensive new roof this year. I would also like to mention we are voluntarily cooperating with the fire marshal, who's been terrific, but he is dumping a significant additional amount of money burden on us so that we can come up to code, which we are willing to do. The comment was made that we are not in danger of closing. We're not going to shortfall our programs. But let me tell you, I have to close my budget the same as you. So when all these bills come in, if I don't, if I'm not able to make it with fundraising and grants, yes, we will curtail hours in programming because I don't have the cash. A lot was mentioned about tangible benefits. This is, this is an age-old conversation for any arts and culture-type project. And I would ask the council, I don't know how you measure tangible benefits. When I've done cost analysis on other projects, the return on investment is broken into soft benefits and hard benefits. And typically, arts and culture falls into soft benefits. You can't put a dollar figure to it. And I would ask you, you support the Arts and Culture Commission. How do you measure the tangible benefits? We all know they're there. I support it 100%, but could I put a dollar figure to what it brings? No, I don't know how to measure that. So I would say that we're no different. Lastly, in terms of drawing people to the community, ask Larry Johnson at the Chamber as Tim Conaveal. We needed Tim Conaveal's endorsement to apply for a USDA grant. He jumped at it because he knows. He sells us as an amenity to businesses looking at Pinell County. If you look at the communities surrounding us, they are supported by their councils. They would not be able to open their doors if they did not get funding every year. So this is a precedent that exists elsewhere. We're not asking for that kind of funding, but it does exist elsewhere. I thank you.
Question. What is the cost of your roof again, if you could refresh my memory?
We're going through the process. My estimate right now is $30,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and just, I do not believe there's any more Call to the Public. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Just to take a quick moment, just to respond to some of the things that we had heard and just to clarify a few facts. As you know, this has been a long and ongoing issue between Florence Copper and the Town of Florence. Just a few clarifications. When it comes down to water, there's only one aquifer that flows north of Florence Copper. So I've spoken with other municipalities and other counties. When their water gets polluted, and it does, they cap it and they move to the next aquifer. We don't have that luxury. The prior pilot that was there showed pollution in water in as little as 90 days. The current and the prior council's actions have resulted in increased safety regulations. Unfortunately, there have been mistruths on behalf of Florence Copper. And I would encourage anybody to sit down with Mr. Benjamin Bitter or our town manager, and I'm willing to sit in those meetings as well, to clarify anything further. With that, close to the Call to the Public. Next item is a presentation with our most amazing Florence Teen Council and an update on the anti-bullying video. Mr. David Lewis.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give them a second. I got to get all my little ducks in a row here. Make sure everybody's good. We rehearsed before we came because that's how we roll. Well, I hope you guys are doing great. I know I am doing fantastic. We have had a fantastic year and now that we are coming up to the end of the fiscal year. But like normal, I don't want to say too much because I let the kids speak for themselves. So without further ado, I'm going to throw it on over to Abigail Johnson.
Thank you, David. We had a few events that we did in February. We started off with our Cupid's Ball. We had FTC members volunteer for that. Our FTC members that volunteered did DJing and we also sold snacks at our snack bar. We also had a photo booth and games that the kids at the dance participated in while they were at the dance. We also had our annual symposium. We served food and we had our speakers come out and speak again. We had four speakers and they spoke on four different topics, but our main topic was decision-making. We also got to meet new teens and other councils from around the state. Next up is Ariana Wyman.
In March, we had a barbecue and Suns game. Thirteen of our members went to South Point High School for a barbecue. We played games such as cake ball, we socialized, and we did a grill. We also went on a tour of the school with the FHS VSU. After that, we went to the Suns game. At the Suns game, we met with some of our advisors, friends that worked at the arena. We were on the Jumbotron twice and we also took pictures with the Phoenix dancers. Next up is Jayden Jones.
In March, the women's club had a fashion show. Members of the Florence Teen Council volunteered and hosted the fashion show. As well as when Rosati served the food and members of FTC served the models as well as the rest of the audience. Florence firefighters and police officers escorted the models and the models were very phenomenal. Next up is Jayden McMillan.
We started, we started off our April with a 50 Saw Hop. The senior center and the FTC came together to put on a 50 Saw Hop for the senior citizens. We provided food, music, and did trivia and prizes for them. Besides that, we spent a good time dancing and having fun with them. Also in April, we went to the Road to Country Thunder to get more people interested and learning about the FTC. Neil Roberts and I walked on stilts to provide entertainment. We had a fabulous time engaging with everyone there and I especially enjoyed the experience. Next talking will be Ariana Wyman.
Also in April, we had an Easter extravaganza. Seven FTC members all met up at the Heritage Park and half of us helped set up the DJ table and the other half of us helped do decorations. Two FTC members walked around and did face painting while two other FTC members did animal balloons. It was really fun and we all enjoyed it ourselves. Next speaking will be Anne Fellows.
I'm going to be talking about the Members of the Month and they are Jayden McMillan for January and for February, March, and April is Kara Roberts. Next up is David.
So I guess in our training next time, we're going to teach how to use a clicker. That's okay. We'll use a clicker. We use the mouse over there. While you guys can see, we had a fantastic year, second half of our year. But kind of to reward these kids and all the amazing things we did, about a week ago, we had our Florence, our first annual Florence Teen Council banquet where we actually invited all the families and the members of the Teen Council to come and enjoy the night to celebrate them. We gave away a bunch of awards, but our main three awards that we gave away were FTC Member of the Year Runner-Up Middle School, which actually happened to go to Ariana Wyman. We had our FTC Member of the Year Runner-Up High School, which went to Kara Roberts. And our FTC Member of the Year went to Jayden McMillan. These go by points. For everything that the members do in the program, they get a point. Different point values for different things. So these top three were our top three contenders with points. They all did a fantastic job. They all got points for this next one. The next one is our bully video, but to present that is going to be Kim Coco Hunter.
Okay, so while we have some problems with the audio, so we're going to use a microphone. But the bully video was a long time in the making. I spent the better part of five years trying to find someone to produce it, direct it, shoot it, and I didn't have any luck. So as the old adage goes, the best way to get something done is to do it yourself. And so that's what I did. So I started writing the storyboard for the video and I had this bright idea to play the song at one of the FTC meetings just to get some more content, what they had to say about it. So I played the song. After I played the song, the emotions in that room were so thick. A couple of people had to excuse themselves from the room and I was almost one of them. But the content that came out of that, the conversations and the emotions that came out of that room, I believe is what made the video what it was. So with no further delay, we're going to play the video. So with no further delay, we're going to play the video.
Yeah. 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 Yo. Let me introduce you to a girl named Simone. She was ridiculed by many and lived in a broken home. Her mother's disabled, her father's in prison. Her brother's a gang banger with a meth addiction. She's only twelve and feeling life is hell, 'cause she's always getting teased about her hair and her nails. Kids joke about her mother to the cruelest extent. She's embarrassed of her clothes, but the money is spent. She hates to ride the bus to school. Every day, they all laugh at the holes in her shoes. She cries in the bathroom right before class. She wonders to herself, "How long can it really last?" She walks in the room so shy and discreet. Wipes her tears, drives her eyes on the way to her seat. Now the feelings of stress are now feelings of blessed. Eight plus on a test that sits up on the desk. Ay, yo. You don't have to hate on me. I'm just trying to live my life free, yeah. What's the difference between you and me? But the clothes and shoes on my feet, whoa, whoa. Why you wanna pick on me? Is it 'cause you're in pain like me? Ay, yeah. The only difference between you and me are the clothes and shoes on our feet. Bully, let me be. Let's meet Johnny from the ill-ported town, where you never walk alone and sirens never calm down. He's only eighteen, what an NBA dream, but the thugs on this block have a methodical scheme. They place some bets on the game. They tell him shave a few points. Don't make us put you in a vice and separate a few joints. Best, keep it to yourself, 'cause if you speak of the deal, we gonna show you how these thugs dribble steel for real. So now he's going through a change, situation insane. How could they ever disrespect and throw dirt on his name? Trying to ruin his fame. Next Kobe would gain. Tried to take his opportunity as soon as it came. Both his parents were slain. Made his game through the pain. Wind sprints in the rain, all the cuts and the sprain. Johnny looks him in his face and tells him so clear. I can never let a bully control me with fear. Ay, yo. You don't have to hate on me. I'm just trying to live my life free, yeah. What's the difference between you and me? But the clothes and shoes on my feet, whoa, whoa. Why you wanna pick on me? Is it 'cause you're in pain like me? Ay, yeah. The only difference between you and me are the clothes and shoes on our feet. Bully, let me be. Check out Tony, a gear home from the war. Got a medal for bravery for tours in the Marine Corps. He walks with a limp, got a bullet lodged in his back. His left hand is cramped, his right arm is detached. Nobody really knows what goes through his mind. Flashbacks of the Bane that left him partially blind. The innocent lives passed like ghosts through his eyes. He says the prayers for the soldiers up high. He walks up out of block and everybody is staring. Harsh words from the people and the temperature's flaring. Thinking signs in the street, he hears the swearing and yelling. They judge him for it all until it's all over barren. More yelling and glaring. His heart is on fire, his soul is tearing. American veteran, is anyone caring? Set the child of the street. She gave him a hug, I know he did it for me. Ay, yo. You don't have to hate on me. I'm just trying to live my life free, yeah. What's the difference between you and me? But the clothes and shoes on my feet, whoa, whoa. Why you wanna pick on me? Is it 'cause you're in pain like me? Ay, yeah. The only difference between you and me are the clothes and shoes on our feet. Bully, let me be. Don't bully, don't bully. Don't bully me. Don't bully, don't bully. Don't, don't bully me. Don't bully, don't bully. Don't bully, don't bully me. Don't bully, don't bully. Don't bully.
So that's the video.
You guys did good.
So, yeah, that video was... It was difficult. You know, you would think that something like this would be therapeutic, but we found out fast, quick, and in a hurry how painful therapy can be. And we posted this on Facebook, and in less than a week, we had over 6,000 views. And the comments that were left on there and the support that we got was unreal. Actually, a couple of news stations caught wind of it, saw the video, and they invited us to go down to the station to do a story on bullying. And we could not have done this without the Town of Florence. Like I said, I tried for five years. I let Brent hear it, and he was like, "Hey, this is great, let's move forward." And I want to thank all the council members that understand that there's a lot of people out there that needs our help, and I thank you for your support. And, you know, the FTC members, the actresses, the actors, I mean, they just brought all of this to life. Travis, thank you for bringing the basketball teams over, boys and girls. And then my brother's here in the corner. He's the actual thug in the movie. That's my brother John right there. And I like, "Hey, I need you." He said, "Don't say another word, I'm there." This is only part one. What we started putting together last week is a 30-minute assembly that's gonna be taken to the elementary schools, the junior high schools, the high schools. And we're gonna have music. We're gonna have a dance troupe that's comprised of people that had been bullied. And we're gonna have... They're putting it, writing the script right now for a five-minute play. They're gonna reenact a scenario, a bullying scenario. And at the end, they're gonna have a Q&amp;A session with the crowd to get their input, how do they feel. And we're gonna pass out a pamphlet that's gonna let them know what they can do if they have been bullied. And for those who have bullied before, it's gonna help them to understand why they do what they do. And a lot of great things are coming out of Florence, and I can't thank you enough for understanding and getting that these teens and actually the community needs what we're providing. I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys did an amazing job in that video and putting everything together. Very impressed with all of your hard work and effort since the creation of Florence Teen Council, so you guys have a lot to be proud of. You're making us proud. And thank you to all the extra adults that helped out Mr. Coco, so he could do this for the kiddos. Item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A is approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Florence and the Arizona Department of Revenue regarding the Uniform Administration Licensing Collection and auditing of the Transaction Privilege Tax, Use Tax, Cease Tax, Jet Fuel Excise, and Use Tax and Rental Occupancy Taxes imposed by state, cities, or towns. Item B is the approval to purchase a new Caterpillar 2509D truck loader from Empire Southwest using the City of Tucson's Cooperative Contract Number 16153401 in an amount not to exceed $63,330.38. Item C is approval of accepting the registered demands ending April 30, 2019 in the amount of $2,876,528.36. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like anything removed at this time? With that...
I'd like item C removed.
Okay, item C is requested to be removed. We need a motion approving the consent agenda, removing item C at this time.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Two questions. One, the GO payment to Pulte for $922,656.55. I was just questioning whether that goes to Pulte, or does that go to Merrill? Harrison Merrill?
I think I have this one right. Well, that was an easy question. I thought there was gonna be a hard question. This one goes to Pulte for work that they've done in CFD2.
Oh, okay. So it's not part of that bond payment or anything? I had one other question. That was the lock-in, the $5,000 that we, I guess, gifted to the school. We had a long discussion last meeting about not gifting money. How do we get around the gift law on that?
Well, in previous discussions, and I'll let Mr. Billingsley respond to this. One of the partnerships that the Town of Florence and the school district has in working together to keep our youth safe, as another person had previously mentioned even at this meeting, there is not a lot of things to do for fun in the Town of Florence, unfortunately, kid-wise. There have been accidents that have resulted in deaths in the past, especially on graduation night when kids are more prone to get together and engage in not-so-appropriate activities. So this is just a way of investing in our youth and keeping them safe, much in the way that we invest in the Florence Teen Council and any other programs. Mr. Billingsley, can you also add on to that?
Sure. The lock-in program, et cetera, that has been funded traditionally by the council. The first year that I was here, I was a bit surprised to get the request during the year and to take that item... We had to take that item to council, to get council to approve of that because it was not budgeted for. But for the last two years, we've included in the council budget the money for Operation Graduation under the General Council Funds, so...
I don't object to what we did. It's just that we made quite a deal out of the gift law. So that was my only concern. It's not where the money went or trying to, you know, service our youth. I want to support that, but it's just... Is this in violation of the gift law?
Gift clauses specifically benefit to private parties, business owners, and property owners with funds, men, material, including staff time, et cetera. An agreement between the town and the school district and the county and the school district as well is not a gift clause issue.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I make a motion that we approve item C.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carries. All right, AA, we have some unfinished business in discussion approval/disapproval of awarding the Quinn Building Auction to Tom L. and Carolyn S. Smith for $21, and instruct the town manager to file a deed to include restrictions as outlined in the request for bids. Bless you, Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, on May 28, bids were due at 11 o'clock. We did receive one bid. The minimum offering that would be accepted was $5 pursuant to the advertisement that was placed. Mr. and Mrs. Smith did place a bid for $21 on that property. So we are here today to ask for the award of that bid. After the bid closed, they did come in, and they did bring us the attached stability report, which I thought was really good because they did all of this at-risk and already paid for somebody to come in and look at the building so that they particularly know what needs to be done. They've also met with SHIPO, so they understand how programs work. I feel very confident that they will be able to be successful in completing the renovations to this property. So staff is recommending that council go with the... and approve the award of the bid to and auction the building to the Smiths.
Perfect. Mr. Smith? Come on up for a moment. I really appreciate that both of you are here in the audience today. So I have one question. Why $21? I mean, 'cause in my head, here's what popped in my head. You know when you play blackjack, 21? It's the winner? Maybe you're a winner?
An odd number's always better. I wanted to make sure this was in your packet that's on the Strutland Engineers Report. This Strutland Engineers Report, when I talked to this gentleman, I said, "I want two things done. I want as much saved in that building as possible." The second, think of town codes. We must work with town. He did it. He proved to us that we needed 75% of the walls. We've got more than that by now. Almost 85%, which isn't in here because of a wall we're gonna build in there. The other is the roof structure, which was to be replaced totally in these original plans. The original plans were done in 2007, so codes have been changed since then. However, some of this is good, a lot of it has to be redone. That will be our next step. Get it done, get it going. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate you and your wife stepping up and coming forward for this project.
Well, I thank the town for all their cooperation. It's been very good, so council, thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Smith, I have a question. I have a question. You walked away too fast. I was just wondering if you have a plan for what you will do once you're all done? What will the building be utilized for?
Good question. However, there are two or three people have expressed desire to rent the building, but that has not been decided yet. I think you have to understand what I do with the building. First of all, I have a two-story on Main Street, Adobe, which we rebuilt. It's rented out to cover the monthly costs of the building. That's the only way you're gonna rent anything out in this town right now. People are asking too much money. The building is falling down and running into disrepair. You've got to keep it so the building pays for itself, but expect the value to go up, in the value of the building, as time goes along. Won't be in my time, but hopefully it's to my daughters or somebody else's time. But really, if you can just make the building pay for itself as far as taxes goes, as far as your insurance goes, and so on, utilities, then you can, in the long run, come out okay on that building. This one will never make a profit. We don't expect it to, but it will be there for another 100 years.
Thank you. My next question's gonna be to probably Brent. So if for some reason during the process of the renovation, say the Smiths decide that they want to sell it, it could just be because somebody comes in and offers them the right price or whatever, is there a restriction that's going to prevent them from being able to do that? Or are they gonna be able to sell it, and then the deed restrictions that were in place when they purchased it at auction will still be there, that the building will be required to meet certain steps at by certain dates?
Lisa says she's ready for this one.
Of course she is. So pursuant to the deed restrictions that we're gonna do, the town is authorizing the Smiths to go through and to stabilize the building and to go forward and get a certificate of occupancy. After they get the certificate of occupancy, they can sell the building if they choose. But right now, we have a deed restriction that says that the Town of Florence can have that property revert back to the Town of Florence if it's not strictly met with these guidelines.
I can guarantee you the building is not gonna be sold because the value of a building that size, square-footage-wise, in this town right now would not sell for $100,000. And there's gonna be $250,000, $300,000 in that building. So no one's gonna buy that building, and it's not gonna go up for sale in my lifetime.
All right. Are there any other questions, Councilmember Wall? Okay, with that, we need a motion.
Mayor, remember, council, I'd like to point out one more thing, and that is within the fiscal impact on the building. The town staff is also going in and asking if you would like to consider waiving the building permit fees associated with this project.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to award the Quinn Building Auction to Tom L. and Carolyn S. Smith for $21, and instruct the town manager to file a deed to include restrictions as outlined in the request for bids. I would also like to add to my motion to include a waiver of the building permit fees and the plan review fees. Second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Item B is discussion and possible action on selecting options regarding changes to sign code as it relates to off-premises or off-site signs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At a previous meeting and discussion regarding updates to the sign code, this was one area that we had considerable discussion. Staff has gone and done a lot of research for other communities. We've looked into numerous sign companies who specialize in various types of outdoor advertising and things of that nature. And just want to give you a kind of a brief presentation of where all this ended up. You do have the brief staff report. I will kind of summarize it in the... Somebody's talking to me up here. There we go. Basically, off-premise signs have similar definitions in various communities. But basically, it's a sign that advertises an activity or service or product that happens elsewhere from where the sign itself is located. In common terms, it's a billboard. Now, we all visualize billboards as a ginormous structure along the highway, but it's still the same basic definition. It's advertising products that are elsewhere. Typically permitted off-site signage you find in a lot of communities, different types are municipal-owned structures, highway informational signs. Those are typically the blue signs that you see along freeways and interstates and other highways, the official signs, traffic control. highways, the official signs, traffic control, obviously, and things of that nature. Special events, which are temporary in nature on a regular basis, A-frames. We generally find those in downtown core areas where they will sit on the sidewalk, advertising a daily special or something of that nature, leaving enough room, obviously, for ADA types of traffic, pedestrian traffic to go by them and in front of a business and usually during the hours of operation. The civic organization signs, those are the ones that you will see entering cities and towns that have the plaques up there for Rotary, Lions Club, VFW and organizations like that. Gateway signs, which are basically your entry monumentation. We have those down at where 287 comes into 79, 79B. There's a large one down there, for example. The human signs or sign walkers, these have been ARS regulated as of, I want to say about seven years ago, where as long as that person, the sign spinners are referred to generally, as long as they are in motion constantly, then local jurisdictions have no control over those. If they sit down in a chair to rest, then they violate the sign code, although nobody's going to be sitting there waiting for them to do that. And then political signs and other federally and state-regulated signs. Political signs are outside of the town's jurisdiction based on state statute, and there's been some updates to that that I believe the governor's already signed regarding the term that those can be out has been increased as far as how early prior to an election that they can be placed. Typically, in most communities, these three types of signs are generally illegal unless you come under special circumstances, and I'll get into those in a moment. Snipe signs, and these are definitions that we actually found on the internet. Snipe signs generally are illegal everywhere except, I guess, New York City where handbills get plastered up on everything. But these are what you would consider a handbill-type sign, very small. They're usually stuck on telephone poles, light poles, on the sides of buildings, things of that nature. We generally don't recommend them just because there's no maintenance of them. They're usually up for an upcoming event or something of that nature and are left to deteriorate after that event's over. Bandit or yard signs, again, bandit is a trade name for the temporary signs that you see put up. They are generally used for political advertising and a lot for real estate signage. And of course, on the property where they're advertising for sale or leased, they're, of course, permitted in those locations. Political signing, as we just mentioned, is regulated by state statute. They have a kind of a common size. They're usually made out of vinyl or paper corrugated plastic. Corrugated plastic seems to be the way to go right now. You see them around, stuck in the right-of-way, advertising some kind of special cell service by a company you never heard of before or cable services, things like that, but also can be, you know, freelanced and homemade. These form of signage is generally illegal in most municipalities, and it's because it lands in the right-of-way. Some of them are very professionally made and, you know, putting them up for, you know, real estate on the property or you'll see them, a pool company is putting in a new pool and they'll put one up in the front yard while they're putting in or constructing that swimming pool and things like that. Those are generally acceptable. They're not in total adherence to the code, but it's understandable why they would be there. But generally, what you end up with, though, is freelancing. One sign in front of another, this can happen. I've seen it around the valley. I presume some of you have too. You get the visual proliferation, vandalism by other sign owners, so-and-so put theirs in front of mine, so I'm going to trash his type of mentality. No real design standards and then lack of maintenance. You'll see yard sale signs go up with arrows, so therefore they're not tied to a particular address. And then when it comes to the end of the yard sale, they're just left out there, you know, which kind of adds to the trash and to the, you know, maintenance problems that your own public works department has. But if there's a desire to permit that type of signing, we would suggest you consider our direct staff to look at specific design criteria, you know, if that's something you want to look at permitting. Separations and proper site visibility for intersection driveways and minimum maintenance requirements, make it the responsibility of the individuals placing those signs to keep them maintained and to replace them or remove them if they become deteriorated, things like that. Kiosk signs, the town actually had a program that they were not properly maintained. They used wooden structures, unfortunately, and termites got them. But up in the valley, you'll see these and actually up on Hunt Highway where builders will have their placards on these signs and kind of point it towards their individual developments. Generally speaking, these are owned by a private sign company. They enter into an agreement, like a franchise agreement with the municipality or with the county, to erect those. They rent the spaces, the placards, to the various builders, and if you execute your franchise agreement correctly, the municipality gets a percentage. In some areas, and you may have even seen this out on Hunt Highway, they don't get filled up. You have a lot of blank spaces on them. One of the things that most communities do, number one, is let's say you have an eight-plex of those signs in the franchise agreement, maybe two of them are reserved, you know, the municipal use, you know, to advert, you know, point an arrow towards library, town hall, downtown, things of that nature. Other communities where they haven't gotten used up, they've actually allowed commercial businesses to rent one of those placards also on a first-come, first-served basis. So when that eight-plex gets filled up, it's filled up and there may be a waiting list or something like that. And they're done in four, six and eight-plex generally, but it could be any combination. Again, if they're going to be in the right-of-way, they have to go through design criteria as far as visibility, right-of-way permits, staying away from certain utilities, things of that nature. And this, some examples, Power Ranch, for example, is within the valley and it kind of gives your directional areas to the various builders. That's generally what you see. Other communities, they use them for some of their own purposes as well as two commercial areas, like the one on the far right pointing towards Marine Terrace. I think that's San Diego and the Gaslight Quarter and Convention Center. Those are areas that have commercial businesses within them, and that's one way to do the advertising. But in the, like I said, in the kiosks, they're typically privately owned and only franchised in place. Wayfinding is the one where the town, as far as the downtown area is concerned especially, would have the most control over them. They basically just guide people through the, you know, the physical location that they're at. They're very general in basis. As far as information, they don't call out specific businesses, but rather types of businesses and areas. This is some, these are some other examples of those where they're, you know, pointing you to different types of areas, districts, possible businesses. This program that the town, it's now a city of Buckeye, actually, I designed and built this one about seven years ago for them. And we kept it very general. We pointed people towards the downtown area, to where retail is. These are the, the one on the far left is actually at the entry to the downtown area out on MC85. The one, the two, on the, one in the middle and the one on the right are actually in the downtown. You can see the arrow starting to go in different directions depending on where you were through that downtown area. And they, and, you know, one of the questions here is, for example, you know, to look at an individual business would be the winery. So rather than name the name of a particular winery, there's just a sign that says winery. Now it's very general, and who knows? Maybe we'll get a second one in that same area, you know, serves that purpose. One of the things we have to look at here, though, around the downtown, and it's to, we would have to work on whether this or kiosk signs or any type of signing, the bandit signs, is that a great portion of our right-of-way, Butte, Highway 79, 79B, which is South Main, is all under the control of ADOT. And anything that the council would direct us to look into, we would have to get their permission to, you know, execute this type of a project because of it being their right-of-way and their control. And generally speaking, they prohibit all signage that of off-site nature that is non-regulatory. That being said, the sign on the left that I'm demonstrating up there ended up being on private property, and we executed an easement with that particular property owner so that we didn't have to deal with McDot on MC85. So there are potential solutions depending on locations that would be decided. So those are generally the basic sign types that we're familiar with or anybody else seems to be familiar with at this point. So are you open to any questions you might have or comments?
Go ahead, Bill.
Well, I was going to do Kristin, you, and then Bill. I was kind of going in order that I saw or heard.
Yeah. So, okay, I guess let's take it back here. I think that the signs that we, the issue that I see is that it's not, that it is specific businesses that, so the wayfinding signs, although I like that idea, and I think obviously we've got that here on the loop, and I like that idea. I don't feel that it's specific enough for the needs of the community here. I see even on Hunt Highway with the church that's being established, and they're a little bit off-site off of Hunt Highway. They do the daycare and they have their own individual sign. If we have the wayfinding signs, it's not going to help for those individual businesses all over town. Same with if you're not allowing the bandit yard signs. I feel that, I like the idea of stipulating what that would look like, but I don't like the idea of an outright ban on them.
I agree.
So to me, I don't like, obviously, your clutter picture where they're all over each, all over each other, but I think that, obviously, we need to set guidelines for that. But I don't like the idea of just making them an outright ban. I feel that we still need to come up with a different solution, though. I don't know what kind of policy you researched for individual business owners when they have their own, what, I guess, I guess I don't, still don't know the answer to that question because I feel like the wayfinding signs don't answer the individual businesses that problem. I guess, was there a policy that you found in other business, in other towns where they have for individual business owners to be able to promote it off-site? Like what, I guess, what policies do they have out there?
I really have not, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Larson, I have really not found anything anywhere where they're making allowances for individual businesses to place signs off of their property, other than in a group setting, like the kiosk sign or the wayfinding signs. You know, unless, you know, renting billboard space and those types of things, but we don't have those, they're not allowed here, and we don't have the type of highway traffic that would warrant anybody actually wanting to build one. So I've really not come across any, to be very honest. That doesn't mean you can't generate one.
Yeah. I guess I want to listen to what everyone else has to say. Let's build on some ideas.
And I agree with you about the yard signs or bandit signs. I don't feel at this time it would be appropriate to, you know, have an all-out ban on them, especially since we have new businesses that have been coming into our town. We've seen sometimes they put out these signs. I haven't seen any areas that they've been distasteful or, you know, causing a nuisance. I'd like to allow our business owners to advertise, grow, and then maybe when we get to a point, we can start looking at other options, but to have an all-out ban on them, I don't support that.
I think, if I might, Mayor, keep in mind with some of the recent court cases, especially the Supreme Court case against the Town of Gilbert, and I'd have to look to Cliff a little bit on this and might take some more research, but I'm not sure that we could restrict it to just town businesses. If you allow that type of signage, we, you know, we're right back to those advertising cable service and internet service from some, you know, long-distance phone number someplace and things of that nature. So, I mean, there's the balancing act, I would think.
But I haven't seen a lot of that in our town, unless I'm missing it.
We picked them up.
Okay.
We have, we had a collection. We have a special place for them out.
At the Public Works.
Highway 287.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cortez?
So as far as the bandit signs, I understand that. Typically, in my industry, when you go to school, you learn that you're supposed to check the town or the city or the county's codes on signs. So everybody's aware of it. Nobody's shocked when they find out that technically those signs are not allowed. Nobody usually fusses unless there is 500 signs that you've placed out or you're not picking your signs up. It's kind of one of those, it's, they're not allowed, but nobody will bother you as long as you're respectful. You pick your day, you're doing your open house on Friday, you put them out an hour before and you pick them up within an hour of the closing of the open house. If you're having an estate sale, as long as you pick up your signs, I haven't ever really experienced where someone, where a town is just outright, like you can't have them and they just go pick them up. Typically, what I've seen is towns go around and pick them up when they realize the yard sale was three weeks ago and the sign is still out. Or there's 50, "Hey, get cable from us," or "Hey, we buy ugly houses." You're not really advertising a service for just a limited time. You're just putting your sign out there that, you know, "Hey, we want to buy your house," and they leave it out for a long time. So the bandit signs, that part never actually concerns me unless it's just an outright, "We're not going to ever allow them and pick them up." There's kind of that little grace period. And so I think as long as we have that, that with understanding there's a grace, that if you're having a yard sale or you're doing an open house or you're doing a special event and you want to advertise, or you're running for an election or whatever, that there's that little period that you can put them out. They just can't be out forever unless you are on private property and have permission from that property owner to be on there, then that's where I would question if I give someone permission to put my sign or their sign in my yard and as long as it's not violating my HOAs or wherever you live, then would it be allowed? So that'd be my kind of like comment on that. As far as the other side.
Why not have that written in?
Huh?
Why not have that written in?
Right. Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, kind of, like with that stipulation, you know, that you can have it as long as it's picked up within an hour after the event or a reasonable amount of time after the event or something like that. So it's not really just banning them altogether. If you want to put your, "Hey, we buy ugly houses," that's great, but you can only have it there for two days. And if we notice it's there for longer, then they're going to get picked up and taken to the special little place that you just mentioned, which must be sign heaven or hell? I'm not quite sure.
You'd have to ask waste management.
Do you have any of my signs there?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't, actually, and you make a very good point because the onsite real estate signs, we don't touch because they're legal. As far as the open houses, and not looking for brownie points, but the good realtors, they bring them out Friday afternoon, they have their open house, they go away. People don't get too much heartburn over it as long as, and I've seen this, they're stuck in handicap ramps, they block sidewalks, you know, and things like that. But the ones that are properly placed, they don't interfere with site visibility, they generally kind of have a grace period.
Could you even stipulate that in order to place one out, you have to, on that sign, have a name and phone number of who owns, who this sign belongs to? And then that way, if there's an issue with that sign, that person could be contacted and we could say, "We removed your sign. This is why we removed it. Here is our guidelines for these type of signs. If you choose to place one again, you need to make sure you follow these signs. If you continue to abuse the policy or the guidelines, then you're not going to be allowed to put your signs out anymore if you can't follow the rules." That's just kind of my two bits on the bandit signs.
And actually, that's a requirement for political signs.
Yes. I know, that's why I brought it up. Trust me, I had to go handwriting in on a few. As far as the, then the signs, the wayward signs and stuff like that or wayfinding sign, I really liked some of the ideas. I'm looking at Kristin's because it's open. That's why I'm looking at it. I did like, you know, the one that looks like it's on the pole and the signs are kind of just, it's like a light pole that's already there, so it's not really going to an extent of adding more to our street corners. It's already there, so, you know, can we add to those? I like the idea of just saying winery or wedding destination or, you know, banquet hall or, you know, gas stations are this way, this way, and letting people know that there's more than just gas on Pinell Parkway, that there's gas on Main Street. There's a hotel down here because a lot of people don't know that there's a hotel down at the end, and then they don't know there's a bed and breakfast on the other end.
That's correct.
So I like that. I definitely feel that we need it. As far as individual businesses advertising on that sign, I don't necessarily know if I like that idea because then we're going to have the fight that somebody got special treatment or I turned mine in before they turned theirs in. And I think it's easier if we just keep it clean and just say, "The library is this way, the aqua, the swimming pool," just couldn't say that word, is The swimming pool, just couldn't say that word, is this way. Town hall is this way, and however... And just kind of help guide people. But one of the things that I really enjoyed seeing on my Facebook was this beautiful mural that the town of Queen Creek is having painted. And I'm pretty sure it was Queen Creek or Gilbert. I'm on... I watch both of them. It could have been Gilbert's, though, now that I think about it, on Go Gilbert. But it's this beautiful mural, and one of the comments that was made was, "What a great photo destination spot that is gonna be." And I know when we brought this up, Kathy Adams had made the statement that a mural of a map, kind of saying, putting some of those key little destinations would be great, because it would, one, it would be something that would help direct people and show them a map, and we could mark some of the little historic places on it and mark some of the businesses that have been here for 45 years or whatever. But it would be a place that people could stop, look at, admire, and then maybe take a picture. And what do we all do when we take a picture and put it on social media nowadays? We tag where we're at. And the more people tag where they are at, the more it brings people to you. So, I like both ideas. I like the signs, and I like them being very general. But I still want to explore as well that idea of a mural. And I know we have an arc being that murals aren't allowed, but maybe we need to rethink that as well and think of a way that we can incorporate both ideas to really help set our town apart from some of the ones that are right next door to us.
If I might, Mayor, Councilmember Cortez, a couple of things, just real quick. First of all, the sign on the left, which looks like it's post-mounted, that has, in other words, the double poles on it, that one's actually on skids. We were able to move that sign anyplace we wanted it on the various entries to town. You come in with a forklift, lift it up, move it to where you want it. So, it wasn't even permanently set, which actually made it much more flexible as to the abilities of how to adjust the visibility of it, the general location. And it's a rather large sign. The other two actually are post-mounted. We did have to add new posts in the ground because the spacing just worked out better that way. Because, you know, sometimes you can take advantage of the existing structures that are out there. But they had a nine-foot head clearance under them. They flagged back over the sidewalk. They were out of the way. So, you know, they... We'd actually walked it with the town engineer and public works director to make sure they were sighted in a safe manner and all those types of things. As far as the mural, that would not really be an element of our sign code other than removing any prohibitions and putting some type of regulation on it. I ran a arts and mural program for the City of Salem, Oregon, years ago, where we actually did murals in various locations around the downtown that either depicted the history of the area or were just fun trombois or something of that nature. To do something like a map, you see that in a lot of communities, or even around the state of Arizona. You'll see map murals. And I think that's something, in my mind, that's worthy of researching further. And we'd have to get the cooperation of building owners to allow that to happen on their property, be property sealed, put some type... They have what they consider graffiti-proof coatings that can be put over the tops of them to preserve them, things like that. So, but I think that's worthy of consideration, too.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, I'm good with everything except like the murals. I think that, I think we need to look at that hard, because Tucson has them all over. Williams, Winslow, Casa Grande. They, you know, we could have a, have it go before the Arts and Culture Commission possibly. It's just a suggestion. To make sure that they're quality murals, have them go before a, an art committee or whatever to make sure, or a committee made up of regular laymen and some artists or whatever, just to make sure that, you know, they're quality murals. Because I think at one time, unless, unless it was just a rumor, but I thought the windmill was wanting to do a mural on the old Plymouth dealership down there by Panal Market. The white building right on the very corner with the glass, a lot of glass windows in the front. It's right across from where the Circle K used to be. Anyway...
I recall that. I recall hearing that as...
Well, you know, I think that would help guide people out, too, there. And if it's a nice mural that goes along with Florence's, you know, history or whatever, and it could say Sawmill, you know, this way, or not Sawmill, Windmill, or whatever. But anyway, however, whatever they wanna put on it. But it would, I think it would add a little, it would jazz up that intersection, because it's kind of blighted at the time, anyway, with the closed-up circle case sitting there. It might add a little color and ambiance to the entrance coming into town. But, yeah, I think we need to look at murals really hard, because they are being utilized more and more. I'm not sure on... I know Chandler has some, a few locations, but they're not that uncommon. I mean, they're starting to be utilized more and more, not just here, but in other states and other places. It just helps, you know, promote the businesses and the community. Anyway, that's all I have.
Any other comments or questions?
Mayor, I really like the idea of the mural with the map. I think the chamber has a map that's somewhat cartoonish in nature, but it's very colorful and it's very attractive. It points people in the right direction. It kind of gives you a "you are here" sense. Every time I go to a mall, the first thing I look for is that sign that shows me where everything is and shows me where I am. And I think if we could find someplace in the city center, town center, where people would be likely to start their visit to town, that would be a great place to put a mural like that that shows them how to go to the various places in town that might be of interest. So, I really like that idea. Something else that I've seen in historic areas, and I don't know if this is practical in Florence, but kind of a follow the Yellow Brick Road on the roadways, where if you're looking for restaurants, there's a way that you can follow a path that's actually painted on the streets. In Boston, there's something like that, where you're following the historic trail. And it's something else, I don't know, it would have to be expanded on, but something to think about.
Councilmember Larson?
Yeah, I love the mural idea. I think that's fantastic. I love that it's, it would help navigate mostly the downtown area. I, like I said, the, I love also the kiosk idea, the idea of putting it on the light poles. My biggest concern was, when looking at all of this, was listening to those business owners, whether it's, or churches, or whatever the establishment may be, that is off of the main thoroughfare. And I'm not talking about just downtown. This is important to remember. There's Felix, there's over on Hunt Highway. That they are off the beaten path, but there's still businesses there. And so, I was looking for more of a policy implementation, not just a structure or a mural that would help those business owners attract businesses, or at least even let the businesses, let the people know when they're looking for that business of how to get there from the main thoroughfare. So, that's something that I, I mean, I'm open to ideas. I was hoping that we would hear some today. But I need something that's not just something that focuses on downtown. Because downtown, I agree, there's businesses that are off the beaten path and that need, that we can work around with a mural idea, with the wayfinding signs, but I don't think that's gonna take care of the big picture.
Right. And what I've heard so far, at this time, you know, not restricting those bandit signs, looking for ways to include the mural in addition to those other positives you've put out there of, you know, the wayfinder signs and such. I guess what I'm trying to say is maybe not limit so much, but bring forward the other ideas of way to, ways to, you know, advertise and help others. I do agree with you in the areas like where you've talked about the... I can't remember the word for it, where you tack them up on telephone poles, or you make your own... Like, absolutely. I don't think anybody should be tacking into those. But, you know, the bandit signs, I hate calling them bandit signs, the yard signs, you know, the ability to have those, but maybe bring in a way of, you know, certain time periods and making sure that there's contact information on them. I think that would be important. And I do see the value in the murals. You know, that helps with beautification as well as promoting.
Yeah. With Kristin's idea, Councilmember Larson's idea, you know, when you go to the mall and they have their directory, and it has "You're here," and then it has section D, section C, and it separates them. So, even for the businesses that are off the beaten path, that are in Anthem, that are off of Felix, that are, you know, back by the windmill, because as we know, there's plans to grow that area. So, those sections, that map could even have a little divider that would let you know, "You can find restaurants in A, C, and F," or "You can find hotels in A and D." And so, that way, people see that not everything is just on Main Street. Not everything is on Panal Parkway, that there are things beyond these two streets. There's stuff that is a block away from Main Street that if somebody didn't tell me to go over there, I would never know. I would, I would have never have found, like, the women's club, because I didn't know it was there until I was specifically directed to go there for a reason. But if I had something that had it listed and told me where it was, I might go check them out. Or, you know, the shoe repair guy, if I just knew that there was something in that direction, it would make me go that way. So, maybe it's a mural, and then with your, with your signs that say this stuff, maybe underneath that, there could be another directional map that isn't colorful and isn't pretty, but it's just very matter-of-fact. If "You're here" in A, here is section B is Florence Gardens, section C is Anthem, section D is over by the high school, or however it's laid out. And it just kind of tells you that these businesses, or these types of businesses, are over here. And it might be something that's just printed on paper, that might be able to withstand the sun somehow, or something that gets replaced as businesses change. I don't know, but there's, there's definitely a way that that can be addressed as well, I think. But I appreciate the effort that has gone into this.
And we've done, other places, we've done, you know, like "you are here" type of things, and then we'd even have QR codes attached to them, although I don't know if anybody really uses those anymore.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Well, I guess several things. One, as far as the real estate signs, it was my understanding that they could put them out on either Thursday or Friday, but they had to pick them up by Monday morning. Is that, is that my imagination, or is that code?
It's more like an unwritten policy.
Okay. Well, maybe we ought to make that as a written policy, and then it wouldn't, there wouldn't be any question about it. So, that would be my suggestion on that. I like the ideas of trying to come up with some way to, you know, advertise our businesses. We've talked about, you know, digital signs or something like that, where we could change it whenever we wanted to. We could do more stuff with it, but that's just an idea. The, I like the idea of the wayfinding signs just telling the business descriptions, like winery, dining, so forth. So, I go along with that. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not one to promote additional committees for people to serve on, but there's obviously a vested interest in this topic on the part of not only our council members, but our Chamber of Commerce and our Community Development Department. Perhaps it would be a good idea to create an ad hoc committee to discuss the various ideas that have been presented tonight and probably are still out there not being discussed, and see if some concrete recommendations for action could be put together, a suggestion.
I like that suggestion.
I like it as well.
Mr. Billingsley, let's talk and get that committee going. And if you're a member of council and you want to serve on that committee, please see me afterwards, and we'll talk.
We can do it right now, Mayor, if you have the ability to appoint that committee. Obviously, it should be less than a quorum of council. But if you wanted to appoint a couple of council members, as well as community development and Chamber of Commerce, you can do that right now.
Okay. Who is interested on our council and serving on that?
I am.
And maybe a couple of business people.
Said that. Okay, because you're both female over there, and you have the same tone.
Both of us.
Both of you said that?
No, I said it, but I said both of us. I'd be interested as well.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Councilmember Larson, Councilmember Cortez, myself, Mr. Larry, Mr. Larry, and Mr. Billingsley.
And what we'll do is we'll put that for adoption by the entire council on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Mayor, it was also suggested that perhaps one or two business owners be included on that as well.
Larry will arrange for the business owners to participate. He gave me a nod. Oh, you, Larry, right there.
Just a reminder that because the mayor appointed it, all meetings must be taken place according with open meeting law. Minutes have to be done. Meetings have to be posted 24 hours in advance, and minutes must be approved by that ad hoc committee.
Thank you. All right, so because this item is noted for action and information only, we are going to have the action of tabling this until the next meeting. If I could have somebody make that motion, please.
Make a motion that we table item 8B to the, or no, not 8B, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're correct.
Oh, it is, okay. Yeah, 8B until the next council meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same side, and that motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, under new business, we have discussion approval and disapproval for adopting the 2019-2020 Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Sanchez?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm here to ask the council to approve the budget for the capital improvement plan for 2019-2020. The capital improvement plan is broken down by the Combined Summary Fund and Funding Source, followed by the projects funded by revenues by fund, then by projects funded by development, development impact fees, then by projects funded by grant funds, and finally, by major operational projects funded by fund revenue. The CIP plan that has been presented for your consideration is a five-year plan. Additionally, a few numbers have changed since our last meeting, and the formatting has been updated. So, does anyone have any questions regarding the capital improvement budget plan?
Are there any questions regarding this agenda item?
I have a question on it. I'm concerned about the new recreation center. I'd like to see us pull that until we can have further discussion on it, because that was sort of surprised a lot of us. And we'd like to see maybe some presentation and discussion before we move forward on that. Do I need to make that as a motion, or...
No, let's see if any members of council wanna...
I'll second it.
There's no motion on the floor? It's just questions or comments?
I agree. I think I'd like to see a presentation on it.
All right, so Vice Mayor Anderson had asked for a presentation on that recreation center. So, Mr. Billingsley, I'm going to ask if we make a motion to have a presentation at the next meeting, tabling this agenda item, because if we can't approve the CIP as it is, so, help us.
You have to approve the CIP tonight if you're gonna approve the second... You have to approve the CIP tonight if you're going to approve the second item, which is our tentative budget to stay on our schedule. I would recommend that you delete that item from the, from the CIP, if that's what you feel. Keep in mind that that is just money set aside in case the town is able to negotiate a public-private partnership to move forward on a project in the future. We set aside some money for design of that facility, but there really wouldn't be anything to present, because we haven't done any work with respect to that item, other than talking with a third-party individual and working on a pro forma with, with that potential individual. So, to stay on schedule, we would request you approve the CIP. If that particular item is an issue with the majority of council, then I would suggest you remove that item.
Now, am I also correct in understanding, before we jump to removal of anything, in order for that item to really move forward, council would still have to approve it with the information presented at that time?
Absolutely. We have to come back to council with respect to that partnership and, and a development agreement associated with that. This is just money set aside. If we could gain that opportunity to do a public-private partnership, so that we'd have the ability to do that in the next year. Otherwise, if it's deleted, we won't have the ability to do that in the next year.
Correct. And some of the conversations that we've had as a council prior also talked about some of those partnerships being where in the long term, the town would recoup the investment made, so that there is something to be presented and had in the future, prior to any monies being expended.
Yes, ma'am. We, we've worked with an entity, it's not a surprise to council, we've talked about it before, with respect to that. A business plan and a pro forma has been, Brian, as well as the individual in question, has been working on that for a number of months. The last version that I saw, saw a projection for payback on that facility in between 20 and 30 years. From my perspective, that's a wonderful thing, because most facilities that are built by towns, there is no payback on that, and that's the only way that you can get a payback on this type of investment, is through a partnership with a private enterprise.
Okay. So, Michelle, do you, Ms. Councilmember Cortez, do you have a question? I saw your light bulbs going off.
My question actually has nothing to do with the recreation center.
Okay.
So, do you want me to ask my question?
No, not if it has nothing, does it have to do with the CIP?
I, I think, I don't really know.
Go ahead and ask.
I'm just going to ask it and hope that I don't look like an idiot. So, I do have a question, though. Today, in some conversations, just about historical buildings and things like that, it was brought to my attention that there are several of our historic sites that don't have markers. So, where do I find that money to make sure that we, I mean, why go through the trouble? The Smiths are going to go through all this trouble of getting this building rebuilt and beautiful and usable, and it's already a historical site, but there's no marker. And to me, that's kind of like, wow, that's silly. Why get married if you're not going to have the marriage certificate, right? So shouldn't we have, like, part of the stor, the history of our town needs to have the recognition that this is a historical building, instead of people just walking by saying, oh, look at that great old building. Well, let's tell them what that building is, and let's celebrate that. So I just want to know, is there going to, is there money for us? What is there in here that, that that way we know that the historical buildings can have some markers?
Excellent question. Well, it's happened twice since I've been here, where we required a new historical marker, most recently with the, I always want to say VFW, American Legion. If I recall, that was three years ago, they had another plaque done to celebrate, I want to say, the schoolhouse, if you remember right?
Yes.
And what we did is we went in and found some money through contingency or other funds in the budget. In that case, I think we took something out of planning and development to partner, to purchase that plaque, so...
And we do have $200,000 set aside in the historical...
We've, we've set aside, per Councilmember Anderson's request, the Budget Committee set aside a recommendation for $200,000 specifically for investment in historic Main Street for projects, so that would be the obvious place where it could come from. But I'm not worried about being able to fund plaques. I think, I think we can handle that.
Do you know how much they are?
Actually, I don't.
Chris Reed, would you know?
Well, it's actually the last part, you were, I don't know how many letters, $1,000, $1,000.
$300 to $1,000, so we'll, we'll find the money if we need a plaque.
Perfect. Thank you.
So my suggestion for this agenda item with the CIP would be to leave it in, because there will be a presentation, and I would hate to have that opportunity taken away.
I, I would agree with you, Mayor. I, I think these CIP items, in many cases, are placeholders, and almost, at least the more expensive projects would have to come before the council for type of analysis, justification, to determine whether or not they're feasible. So I would leave it in there, otherwise you're talking about postponing for another whole year and a half, or, or more.
Yeah.
Well, do we have to have special approval of the $150,000? Will that come back to us, or by approving this tonight?
Yeah, it will come back before us.
Of course, we...
All these projects will come back, I mean...
Oh, all these projects will come back, of course. That project's for design, so it will require an architect or an engineer, probably both, to move forward with that project, and, and obviously, that would come back to council for council's approval after a state bid process.
You know, my concern is, is justification for doing this, and so I want to make sure that we all understand what the benefits are going to be for this.
On what particular are you asking? Benefits on what?
The recreation facility.
We've, we've discussed the CIP, we've, you know, it's time, I don't underst... We've got plenty of time to discuss that when it comes before us to start spending money on it. I think right now, we need to move forward, we're on a schedule, we can't postpone this, we're just, I don't know what we're doing right now. I mean, everything that we spend our money on down the road, it's got to be okayed, so...
All right. With that, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2019-2020 Capital Improvement Plan as presented.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 1699-19. This is a discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penalt County, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for the Town of Florence for fiscal year 2019-2020, adopting a tentative annual budget, setting forth the receipts expenditures and the amount proposed to be expended for various purposes, giving notice of the time for public hearing for taxpayers on the adoption of the final budget, adopting the budget in accordance with the state imposed expenditure limitation and voter-approved excess amount declaring an emergency, Mr. Sanchez.
Yeah, so this is the second item that asks Mayor and council to approve, is the tentative budget for fiscal year 1920. The total budget for FY 1920 is set at $45,251,331. If additional changes need to be made after the tentative budget has been approved, the town may make those changes before the final budget is adopted. However, it cannot be more than the tentative budget amount. I wonder if you guys have any questions regarding the tentative?
Did I misunderstand you? Did you say 45?
45, 251, 331.
It's 44 on what?
It's 44.
I would like to make one clarification. The budget is $45,251,331, but exclusions total $16,312,939. So if we're looking at it for the permanent base adjustment, that number comes to $28,938,392. So just want to make sure that we understand we are within our permanent base expenditure limitation, and that, so that number's 45, that 45 million, but then you take in your exclusions, and that's what your permanent base adjustment has to meet, and we're within that threshold.
I think the question's coming, Lisa, because on the agenda item 9B at the bottom, it says the total budget for all funds for the Town of Florence is 44 million, it does not say 45.
Well, there's a typographical error on the agenda RCA. If you look at Schedule A, that's where our budget is, and we did make a correction to that, which will be in your permanent or your, your final budget. So if you look, it shows your exclusions as being 1 million, your exclusions are actually 16 million. The other change that we're making in the RCA is that a vote of yes would mean that you will have a public hearing on July 1, as well as the final adoption will be on July 1. I apologize for the errors within the item. We just want to make sure that we read it in, and we have all of that information on the record, and it will be included in your minutes.
Thank you for those clarifications. And I do also want to, at this time, again, thank public, staff, and Councilmember Larson, Councilmember Wall, for, and myself, for participating in that Budget Committee and that process. Are there any questions regarding this? All right, with that, we need a motion, please.
Make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number 1699-19.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C is discussion approval/disapproval to purchase an A747-FR2000 Echo Trailer Mounted High-Pressure Sewer Cleaner with a Kubata 114-horsepower engine, using the National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative Contract 122017, in an amount not to exceed $104,1298.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. At a very recent council meeting, I was essentially requested, are there additional things that the council can be doing? Are there things that you need? Are there items that we need to purchase? I want to first start off by saying thank you very much for approving the track loader as part of the consent agenda. Public Works Staff really appreciates that, that is a much-needed asset to do some of the maintenance we have in our right-of-way, especially in more of the rural areas. So thank you very much for that. This item tonight is for, again, a trailer-mounted jetter trailer, jetter apparatus. The piece of equipment we have right now is dilapidated, it has been falling apart for years. Most recently, the tank has been welded three different times to try to patch it together, and literally right now is no longer repairable. They literally stick a safety cone in there to plug the hole, it's so large at this point. The tank itself is part of the trailer, it is time for us to move on from our beloved jetter trailer and purchase a new one. This new one is a little bit more advanced in the fact that it has a diesel engine on it versus the other model, and so it'll be hopefully, this is, this is an item when we need it. Unfortunately, we cannot wait to rent or lease, this is in the middle of the night at 3:00 AM, it's, we have something plugged, we got to go out there and fix it. As the council's aware, in the budget that is presented, we budget $65,000 every year to jet and clean all of our lines. That's what this is not for. This is for when we have an emergency and we have to get out there, and we just cannot wait to call somebody, and as things are backing up and filling up in people's homes, we have to get out there right then and there and jet these. So this is an emergency purchase in a way, or this is a purchase to avoid having more emergencies in the future. Again, it's a much-needed item. The one we have now, we use regularly, but it is just old, and it is not repairable at this point, it's not cost-effective repairable at this point.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions? Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. Excuse me. In the CIP that we just approved, there's a $120,000 allocation for a jetter truck. Would this jetter truck replace the trailer that...
It is one and the same. Unfortunately, we're purchasing it this fiscal year, but we will not be able to receive it this fiscal year, and we will be getting an invoice next fiscal year, so it transcends fiscal years.
So it's not a second jetter facility?
No, it is one and the same.
Okay, thank you.
Other question. What fund does this come out of? Is this Enterprise Wastewater Fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions, I'd like a motion, please.
Motion to approve the purchase of an A747-FR2000 Echo Trailer Mounted High-Pressure Sewer Cleaner.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item D, my favorite item of the night, discussion approval/disapproval of scheduling a joint work session with the Florence Youth Commission on August 5, 2019, at 5:00.
We just need to be able to give them the time so that they can start working on an agenda to have with council, and Councilmember Kristen Larson, as their liaison, is going to work on the agenda and the topics for discussion. We'll make sure that the entire council has those talking points prior to the meeting, and we will meet in this room, on the floor, 5:00. We will be here till 6:00, and then we'll very quickly move into position for the night. And of course, we'll invite them to stay for the entire meeting. We may even sit them next to you on the dais, if you, if you desire.
That would be absolutely awesome.
I just wanted to say, these are amazing kids, and I call them kids, but they're so mature, it's like they're not even children. They have so many brilliant ideas, and when they asked what they can do, they, they thought instantly of both policy and purchases that they thought that would help improve the structure of the society for the teenagers. Not something that was temporary, not, hey, we just want to have a party and that's all we want to care about. It was, it's in-depth and it's logical, and I really wanted them to be able to present their own ideas to the council, instead of just me filtering them to you. I felt it was more important for them to bounce the ideas and let you guys have that engaging discussion with them, to be able to make those policy changes.
We have some amazing youth. All right, with that, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, schedule the joint work session with the Florence Teen Youth Commission on August 5, 2019, at 5:00 PM.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Mr. Benjamin Bitter, Legislative Update.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As we mentioned last week, the budget was approved by the, the, both houses of the legislature, as well as signed by the governor. So the legislature has closed its session for the year. Happy to answer any questions you may have today on the, on the budget. Otherwise, I am also meeting with Senator Pratt and Representative Cook tomorrow morning, so if you have questions that I can relay to them, I'm happy to do that as well and get back to you with an answer. So, other than that, I don't have an update.
Do not see any at this time, but if anybody has any, please, do you have one with Councilmember Wall?
I was just going to mention something that was kind of near and dear to my heart, that I just read happened with the budget, and that was that the legislature approved the re-establishment of the Heritage Fund. What is unfathomable to me is that they approved it, but they aren't funding it for the next 10 years. So I'm hopeful that at some point in time, they'll find a way to fund that before 2029, 2029. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Managers' report?
Madam Mayor, members of council, a couple items tonight. The first one is a good news item, hopefully they're all good news items, but the first one is, I just found out at the end of last week, that we've received a grant from the Dollar General Literacy Foundation to give us $2,000, and, Jen, do you, what's this, what are we going to use it on? Summer reading program? And supplies for the STEM program, so absolutely excellent. Thank you for, for you guys' hard work on, on that grant. Secondary, in the manager's report, contained, obviously, in... Secondarily, in the manager's report, contained, obviously, in, in tonight's packet, there's a number of updates with respect to community vitality and all of the wonderful things, and the focus of this issue of the manager's report is swimming and the pool, and specifically the activities at, at the Aquatic Center. And as you can tell, there's a whole lot. Secondarily, we are going to host, we're happy that we're going to host, an Internet of Things and cybersecurity event at the Florence Community Center on June 19, 2019. This is our second annual economic development event in the Town of Florence, so if folks are watching out there in TV land, or Mark wants to get some information out, I believe that information should go to Mr. Ben Bidder, and he can assist. We have a panel of folks that are working on that. Speakers are already set. The room is, is already reserved, and Penale County has once again offered to assist us with respect to that program. Secondarily, we've been talking for about a year about the ability to have an Internet of Things lab provided in the Town of Florence. We have had individuals from Subex here in town last week, and they're here this week, working on the curriculum and training individuals. The supplies have been purchased. They have arrived, and I went over for a demonstration last week. They've already been providing training to individuals at the library to, to run those, those programs, and that's a very exciting thing. We'll have the ribbon cutting. I believe the, the mayor will host that ribbon cutting on, on the 19th. In terms of leadership and governance, this was a change at the last meeting that's carried forward. There was a request to have future agenda items that are going to come to council shown here, and there are a number of things, as you can tell, that are, that are big items that are forthcoming to council. One of the things that staff is very proud of is, if everybody is familiar with Zayo Group, they're one of the largest technology providers, specifically fiber providers, in the entire United States. They're one of the big five that provides fiber in the United States. Myself and Trenton have been working very hard with Zayo to try and, and get them to assist us in putting in a fiber loop in the Town of Florence to assist with our technology future. Most recently, it was an agreement on First Street to allow them to install conduit for future fiber while we have the street torn up and when there's no pavement out in the street, which is of tremendous benefit to Zayo as well as, as to the town. So that's, that's another successful partnership that we've been able to, to accomplish. Lastly, with respect to First Street, as many of you can see, it's still sitting out there, and it's still unpaved. We believe that that project will be completed probably in the middle of July. We've had some real hiccups on that project, having to do with the soils testing that's come back, and the special treatment and additional engineering that is going to have to take place for the structural section for that road. And we've had two different labs, Chris is gone now, but we've had two different labs doing testing. We've come up with a solution, but that's, that's delayed the project along with the Zayo conduit. The last thing that I included in your packet is my annual managers memorandum of town accomplishments. It's a, quite a lengthy list, 103 major accomplishments, the way that, that I count them, and that's a, that's a credit to this council for your support of staff, and also a credit of a very fine town staff in accomplishing all those 103 things. With that, that's my manager's report.
Thank you. Is there any member that has any questions?
I have questions. In your success stories, you talk about the April General Fund revenue is 1.24 billion.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Your April General Fund revenues totaled 1.24 billion?
That's for the state of Arizona.
You didn't say that. All these numbers, I, I looked at it, and I just fell apart.
Those are state numbers that we provide at, at every meeting, yeah, in terms of the state shared revenues and, and that go to the town.
Well, you need to say what those are, because it says April General Fund. I thought that was our general fund. This is your report.
Okay. We will make sure that we, again, specify that those are state general fund revenues for, for state shared distribution.
All those numbers just, wow, 124 million, geez. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hughes?
I'm interested in the Comic-Con. Tell me about that.
Comic-Con?
At the library?
That's something that's been held at the library, I believe, the last two years, or...
Is it?
I think this was the third annual year.
Is it? How many people came last year?
I actually went the first year, because my kids wanted to go, and there was probably, I think the mayor was there as well. There was probably 10 people that assisted, and there was probably 10 to 20 that actually attended, but I didn't attend this year, Brian. Do you know?
Yeah.
He thinks it's about 75 people. It's kind of neat. People dress up in all of their favorite superhero garb. My kids wore their Star Wars stuff the first year, so it's, it's kind of fun, and, and I know Jasper's really into that.
So what did you wear?
What did I wear? I wore nothing. I wore clothes. I wore normal clothes. Sorry. I wore normal clothes.
Okay.
I believe they showed a movie the first year. I think they showed one of the Star Wars movies that had come out the first year.
Will that be advertised on Facebook? That gotta be promoted. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Fun event.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the department reports? All right. Great job, department heads. This is our second call to the public. Same rules apply. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time? And closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, I, I really, I think, I don't really have anything other than the business at hand, and I think we, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Councilmember Wall?
A couple of things. I wanted to acknowledge from the, the manager's report, or from the community services report, that the library received $12,000 from the county library district, and they plan to utilize that for additional 3D printers, steam equipment, and a T-shirt press, along with a large number of books and videos. And I'm hoping that, that these purchases will fit right in with the IoT lab that is currently being installed. I think that's a, a great benefit that's been received. Also, reminding everyone, businesses and interested parties, that the Chamber Mixer is coming up this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. at the River Bottom, and hopefully, we can get lots of supporters out there for that event. Also, there are a number of roadway projects that are starting this week. In fact, on my way over here on Felix Road, I noticed that half of Felix is already done, and I don't think it was expected to be started till tomorrow. So be alert. Felix Road will be repaved, a portion of Arizona Farms, and then a portion of Main Street as well this week, and, and I believe next week as well. So there could be some traffic delays and some lane restrictions. Also, last but not least, the video on bullying brought a tear to my eye. I thought it was very well done, and kudos to the teen council and the Town of Florence for making that happen. I hope that we get broad coverage.
Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to say that my, express my gratitude towards the Smiths for their hard work on the coin building and them taking on that responsibility. I just wanted to say thank you for that again. I also wanted to express to the teens council how proud I am of their hard work, and to bring awareness of the bullying issues, and like I said, they're just so full of great ideas. I just appreciate that group so much. Otherwise, I really don't have anything. So I hope everyone has a safe week, and yeah, that's it.
Councilmember Quodas?
So I wanted to say that I hope that everybody sitting here and out there that are within our school district, so that's more than just the town limits of Florence, but our school district in general, I hope you give as much reflection to their budget as you do ours. That school budget affects this town drastically. Everything our school district does affects this town. An unsuccessful school district means an unsuccessful town, because people won't want to move there. If your school district isn't good, people don't move here. And there are some changes to their budget. They are cutting the buses for after-school sports and activities, and I know that after-school activities is what keeps some kids in school. So I just hope that people will sit back, go over that budget, and start showing up to some school board meetings and start voicing their opinion about how arts, music, and after-school activities, it's even reading. There's tutoring that goes on after school, and how important those programs are to this community and the success of this community. My second is the bullying video. That was awesome.
Mike?
Can you come back?
Yeah, we can come back to you. Councilmember Hughes?
I went to the dedication for the memorial. It was great on Memorial Day, our, yeah, Veterans Day. No, Memorial Day. And it was nice to see the people there. It was, it was a great event, a little windy. And the statue is beautiful. It's in the, it's in the library. So if anybody hasn't seen it, you can go and take a view at that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I apologize. My son was bullied, fourth grade to eighth grade, and if you know me, I don't tolerate it. And so to see our youth take a step to change that, it just, as you can tell, has touched me, and I am so grateful when people pay attention to those kids that are being picked on for stupid things like their shoes, or the color of their hair, or the house they live in, or because they don't play sports, or because they play sports but they don't fit in with the team. So I just commend them tremendously. And then the last thing I want to say is that I read every email that is sent to me, every private message that is sent to me. I listen to every voicemail that is left for me. At times, I can't respond for whatever reasons there are, but just, I want everybody to know, I hear it. I hear your questions. I hear your concerns, and whether I agree or disagree, I take it to heart, and I bring it to council, and I do fight. I fight for our citizens every day and their opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Anderson?
Yes. Wanted to thank everybody who did come out to the memorial. Groundbreaking. I think we had probably had 40, 50 people there. A lot of vets, veterans were there. We had a lot of support from American Legion. They have been just outstanding in this program. Brian, am I missing anybody? Okay. We have raised quite, quite a bit of money, and money keeps coming in, but we still need more. So if you haven't given, people that are watching and listening tonight, get ahold of Brian or I, the American Legion. We're, we're still taking donations. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, we finished our search program this last week, and we also volunteered for a shootout at the high school last Saturday, and I want to compliment our fire department and our police department. It was quite realistic to see these guys running through the school and seeing how they would protect us and our children in that school. We didn't just do it one time. I think we did it a total of five times until we got it right, because this was all new to, and it wasn't just our police department. It was Eloy, gosh, and of course, the sheriff. Maricopa was there. I'm trying to think of all the, all the, I think Coolidge Police was there. There were people there from Oracle. All over the county, people were, were participating in this. So it was, it was a good program. I want to thank our, our chiefs for supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will be brief tonight. I just want to say I appreciate all of the planning that goes into all of the activities and events that are happening in our town. If you have children, there's a great summer reading program. There is summer camps going on. Our pool is open. As we mentioned, we partnered with Red Cross. We have lifeguards on staff. Just amazing opportunities to take part in over the summer. We have an amazing Fourth of July festivities planned in the town, so be on the lookout for that. We are investing as a council in the future. We've been working hard to lay the foundation for the infrastructure, so that way we're working towards that economic development, especially in that Main Street area. So I want to thank everybody for the insights and the perspectives that go back and forth of, you know, what we need to do, how we can bring our town to life, not just in one area, but all of the areas. With that, we have a lengthy executive session, so I would like a motion.
Make a motion. We adjourn to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same side? Motion carries.